They had nothing that had survey data.
All right, it's seven o'clock. It's called me in the order with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its sustenance, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it looks like most of you have been here before, but just a reminder, the exits are over here in the back corner and then one over here. Please silence all your electronic devices, watches, all that good stuff. We will be following the order of the agenda that hopefully you picked one up as you came in. Reminder, when I turn on the mic for the room, all conversations are picked up. So if you have a sidebar conversation, it will be recorded for life. So with that said, the first open item is the approval of the September fourth minutes. Everybody get a chance to review them? Anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Uh, the move by Doug, seconded by? Adrian, any other comments? All in favor saying if I'm saying aye? Aye. Okay, legal notices were published. There are no new, no new legal notices. So the first item up, we'll talk about the first two, the special use permits east and west for Sky Solar. Then we'll get into the site plans, which we're just going to be continuing. Um, because we're going to, we're not going to mock special use first. So you want to come up and just kind of give us an overview of what's changed since the last meeting on the special use permits for east and west?
Last meeting, uh, we have responded to our lease letter of August twenty-nine.
Right.
Number of comments to our engineering plans as well as our operational planning and de-commissioning plan.
Correct.
Submitted a response to the town on those requests. Separately, we also added submitted letters from Sky Solar and our council indicating it's reinforcing our obligation to decommission the project at the end of this play and should that do Sky Solar or the company although it was not being able to do that, I gave a motion to the town to step in and utilize research place, you know, commission bond to step in and return the site to
Correct. Perfect. Okay, Ron?
Yeah, I presented a draft of these two resolutions at the September fourth meeting.
Fifty pager.
And have not received any, uh, comments other than the filling in the blanks that the Sky Solar and company did. So, um,
Right.
We have prepared the final resolution for you to move forward with conditions tonight.
Correct. And we have the two resolutions for the special use permit. And then that'll close them out if we go go that forward. And then we have the, um, site plan continuation.
Right.
Okay, Dan?
Um, I've reviewed the drafted resolutions and I agree with Ron. Uh, they're taken from the code. And the reason for the length is, is the code section is very lengthy on that. And there's multiple items that need to be addressed. And Ron has written it in a way that addresses every bullet point.
Perfect. So we need highway, Tim.
Highway has nothing at this time.
Okay, Lance, talk to us a little bit about decommissioning and the operations of maintenance.
So MRB group did issue a letter. We did get a response. I have had, uh, correspondence with the applicant and the design engineer in regards to our letter and comments. Um, one of the items that are part of the special use permit process and the decommissioning plan and the decommissioning bond estimates associated with this project. I think there were some concerns on whether or not they would be in an acceptable form to move forward. And one of the items that I wanted to bring to the town's attention is that at this moment, they are as updated as they could be to this point. Um, they're not deemed acceptable yet because there's still elements associated with the plan review process that could alter either the decommissioning estimate or the decommissioning plan as presented. So, uh, MRB group does not have any objections to the town moving forward with the understanding that that decommissioning plan is probably going to change insignificant, but to some degree, some measures prior to the town board taking action on that one.
And the operations of maintenance plan?
And it's very similar. Uh, at this point, they've gotten them as far as they can based on content received from us, from staff, from the board, from the public. Um, again, that plan could, could change slightly based on comments and comments received during the plan review process.
Perfect. Okay, just for the public, just, uh, wanted to explain a little bit of that discussion. Um, every one of our solar plants, uh, needs to have a decommissioning plan. It gives the approach that will be handled when and if this project is decommissioned. Um, whether it's at any time, but certainly at the end of life. Um, but could be anytime. They could just say, we're going to decommission, close it down, sell the property. But it requires the land to be returned to the current state. So what we do is we put a fairly detailed, uh, decommissioning plan together and then we put a bond on that that basically once engineering and the applicant get together and they say, well, this is what we think it will cost in today's dollars to decommission it, we require the applicant to put a bond for that. I'm just going to say five hundred thousand dollars. I'm just going to use that number. I just picking it off the top of my head. So they get a bond for five hundred thousand dollars. And then if for some reason they walk away and cannot or will not decommission it, the town has funds to hire somebody to decommission it. That amount is reviewed every five years, three years, I'm sorry, three years to make sure that that amount is current. So as inflation happens, we continue to have a current bond. So the town isn't caught in a pinch where the taxpayers have to do it. So we're very conscious of how to do those kinds of things. We've done it before with one of our other projects. We're doing it very carefully this time. We have a very, um, good process and our certainly our engineering team knows very well what to do and how to do it. The other one is, is operations and maintenance plan. Kind of the same thing. We make sure we know how they're going to operate it, how they're going to maintain it so that we are comfortable that what they're going to be doing there is meets our standards and it's taken care of. And it goes in writing so that we, the, the town staff can hold them accountable for what they need to do. Usually has some type of, uh, reporting requirement in there. So they have to report to us on a regular basis. Uh, different things. It tells them what they can do. So I just wanted the, uh, folks in the audience to understand and anyone that's online to understand that we, we, we take this very seriously. And that's why you'll see if you took time to read some or all of these fifty page documents, one for east and one for west, that actually go through our code and say each piece of code that requires something, this is how this application meets or doesn't meet. In this case, it meets these conditions of the code. So we work very hard to make this, um, as transparent as possible. So you can see what we've done, how we've, how we've reviewed it and how we have addressed those situations. So all of that data, the operations of maintenance plans, the, uh, decommissioning plans, all those are available for your review. They are not finalized. They will not be finalized until the final site plan is done and approved. And then the actual decommissioning and I believe the ops maintenance plan get approved by the town board, not us. That gives, uh, the town a little more legality to make sure we can hold them accountable. So it's a process like anything else. It's one we don't expect you to understand. It, but I wanted to take a few minutes to help you understand, um, what we're doing and why we're doing. So the next item up would be public comments on these special use permits. I'd be, I'd open the floor, a reminder that I'm going to turn on the mics right now. So everything is recorded. So if you have questions on the special use permit, please let us know. I'm taking input. Yes, ma'am.
New Willard sixty-eleven Redfield Drive. And I keep harping on the fact that it's too damn close to the residence.
Hey.
It's World Health Organization says it should be one point two miles away. It's fifty times closer. I, I just don't understand it. The state of Florida requires solar farms to be one point eight miles away. North Carolina requires one point six. As we're asking for is one point two. I brought more reading material for you from FEMA and Sandia National Labs. Um, one of the problems that we have is if there is a fire, the fire department said they just let it burn. That means the toxicity stays in the air longer. Furnaces, new furnaces today, um, that are high efficiency. We live in a very new development with these furnaces, draws air from outside. If there's a fire, we can't have air conditioning. We can't have heat. We have to turn it off because you can't draw in air from the outside. What are you condemning us to? I just don't understand why this is closer than one point two miles. Yes. The World Health Organization has said.
Appreciate that. You're handing materials for the clerk. I appreciate your comments. Um,
I keep harping on it every damn minute.
Okay, um, anyone else like to speak on this one? Yes, sir?
Well, my name is John Gray. I'm in sixty-eight team Redfield Drive. Uh, according from a letter from Sky Solar, dated July tenth, and signed by, right? In the third paragraph states finally, it was agreed to by Sky Solar to relocate, excuse me, the proposed sidewalk and waterline to along the west side of the commercial drive realignment, beginning at the south end of the highway project. My question is, has this been done?
We're not in site plan yet. Um, it's been reviewed in the site plan. That's all the site plan issue. We're not into the site plan. We're trying to get rid of the special use permit first. Certainly it's something we'll consider and look at and see what we do when we get to the site plan area. It's my only question. Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against this application in the room here? Anyone like to speak for or against this application? Okay, I'm going to turn that online. Anyone online like to speak for or against this application? Anyone like to speak for or against this application?
Hi. Uh, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Jeff Hutchinson and I'm, um, the manager with Town Center Partners. We own the, um, property immediately to the south of what is designated as Sky Solar West. Um, I have a couple of questions on the uh, conditions of approval that are included within the special use permit. I don't know whether it's best to raise these conditions now or with the site permit, but I thought I would raise them now.
Now's a good time.
Okay. We sent a letter to this board on July seventeenth. That I believe should be included in the record. Um, we are
Was, I believe it was. Are we, I believe it's already in the record?
In particular, I'm raising questions about items identified in, I'm looking at the west uh, conditional use permit, um, draft, which has conditions number three and number ten that, that pertain to an east-west road connecting the new piece of commercial drive to corporate drive.
Okay.
As is recorded on the current, on, on the most recent subdivision map of the parcels in this neighborhood. The east-west road, which was to be included in a sixty-foot right of ways to be constructed as part of the development of lot four or lot five. We are the owners of lot four. A lot five is Sky Solar West. Um, my question to the board is if there is a recorded restriction or requirement already existing that construction of this east-west road be built as part of the approval of lot four or lot five, why isn't it being required now for this project? And if it's not being required now for this project as a condition of approval, that only remains to be lot four that is undeveloped. And I'm, I'm curious as to how this is going to work.
Well, let's turn it over to staff. What do you guys think? I mean, Ron, Dan?
Well, the previous re-subdivision of the Center Point, uh, North Industrial Park uh, did have, uh, a right of way shown for the east-west road. Okay. That right of way was an offer of dedication to the town. No one had come forward with proposing dedication to it. The town now has a developer who is developing the parcel of land, lot number six, I think it is, of that original subdivision. And that is an offer that's again being made to give the right of way to the town for the construction of a east-west road by others.
Mm-hmm.
They don't need it. Uh, and I know Mr. Hutchinson has personally said that he's willing to participate in any way uh, to, uh, effectuate the, uh, major thoroughfare overlay master plan that we have with the state DOT. It's important to him because he knows the restrictions the state has on access to that uh, corporate drive and to the, uh, future signalized intersection for his property. So, um, I'm not quite sure what he's looking for the town to do here. But, uh, we're ready to move forward with accepting the formal offer of, you know, that kind of.
Okay, did you, uh, do you understand what he was saying?
I do. I think he's, um, I'm not quite sure I'm in agreement with everything that's said there regarding my position on the matter. Um, I just know that there's, it's, it's actually identified in the site plan that Sky Solar has presented that there is a requirement that the east-west road be constructed as part of the development of, of the subject parcel before you as well as our parcel to the south. My question is it's recorded on the map. It's been in every map that's been presented to this body.
You're looking at an offer of dedication of a right of way.
No, I'm, I'm looking at the restriction on the recorded map. The recorded map says to be constructed as part of development of lot four or five. And I'm wondering why isn't the road construction occurring as a requirement of this project?
We haven't heard anything from lot four. Lot four is the one that needs to construct that road to comply with the official highway map.
I don't think that's a discussion you need to have offline with the, uh, with the staff. Um, I mean, not convinced. There's been a lot of conversation with staff on this. So maybe that's what you should do is take some time, sit down with staff and understand what we're doing and why we're doing.
Well, those, those conversations have occurred and, um, the the question still remains, there is a requirement recorded on a map that's in the public domain. And it's not specific, there's nothing specific that says lot four is responsible for constructing a road. It says the road should be constructed by lot four or lot five. And I'm wondering, it's the road, the right of way dedication is occurring now as part of this project, which hasn't occurred before. The north-south connection to commercial drive is occurring as part of this project. Um, which I'm not sure was a requirement or an offer, but as I look at the, the map that has been published and it'll be a site, it'll be on the site map that I believe is going to, has been under review and, and may even be finalized. It says future sixty-foot right of way, future town road to be constructed as part of the development of lot five and or lot four per map.
I believe that's a site plan issue, right? Staff, I mean, is, uh, is it special use permit as well?
He's referring to an old subdivision map that was done for Center Point North.
Oh, okay. So what we have here though, there's nothing in the special use permit that refers to that road and has to be constructed, correct?
It, it does for the, uh, west property line.
Oh, just dedication of it?
Yeah. The right.
Okay. So you can sit down and come in and talk to the staff, talk to them about the site plan and, uh, if you get your questions answered that way.
Well, I think my point here today is to, uh, have our question and potential objection in the record because there's a document and, um, to have it said in front of this board that the construction of that road is required for the development of our parcel to the south, I don't think is accurate. The only thing that's, that's recorded is, is the, is the requirement to that lot four or lot five build that road. And if, if I'm, if lot five is not building it, I'm wondering why lot five is not building it. Is it because if there was a traffic study that determined that it wasn't needed or was there some other validation that the road wasn't actually necessarily needed for the construction of this project?
All right, we appreciate your comments. Uh, we've got them on the record. You can come in and you can stack anytime you want to get, uh, more detail on that. And I appreciate that. Anything else?
Uh, not for me. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else online have a comment? Anyone else in the room? Final comments? Okay, what we have before us are two, uh, resolution. One's for, uh, special use of Sky Star, East Solar Farm. Now, has this got the closing of the public hearing for the special use permit in?
No, that would be a verbal. I could not anticipate what
Okay, as we said. So we'll, um, we'll, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing on the special use permits for both east and west. Do I have a motion? So moved by Doug, seconded by?
Gina.
Regina, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Delucia?
Aye.
Lovebees?
Aye.
Regina Sousa?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
And Hamid.
All right. So the public hearing on the special use permit is closed. Now we have two resolutions. PB zero four zero six, that's twenty-four, that's the east special use permit. We get a chance to review the fifty pages. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution as presented without reading it? So moved by Doug, seconded by? Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote on PB zero four zero six. Aye.
Lovebees?
Aye.
Adrian Sousa?
Regina Sousa?
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
And Hamid.
Ayes. Okay, now we got PB zero four zero seven, that's twenty-four. This is the west solar farm. I have a motion to wait, reading and approve this resolution as presented. Moved by Doug, seconded by? Yeah. Tim, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Delucia?
Aye.
Lovebees?
Aye.
Regina Sousa?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
And Hamid.
Aye. Okay, that takes care of the special use permit piece of that project. A big piece, um, an important piece. And, uh, I think for those here to understand that we go through the entire code, item by item by item, to make sure that we've, uh, we've met that. That's, uh, to me, that's important. So I have a resolution for the site plans for PB zero four zero eight, PB zero four zero nine, and a German continuation of those. Do I have a motion to wait, reading and approve of resolutions? Folks, sir? Yes.
Normally you ask for the applicant
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the site plan stuff. Okay, go ahead.
It's on the site plan. So on this site plan resolution, so I have had the discussion with Lobella, engineer, so that is taking in the comments from the, uh, town engineer.
Right.
The town, uh, residents staff. And, uh, we, we will be able to produce a new set of plans for, uh, the town staff to review by the end of next week. That will give town staff enough time to review and hold the PRC meeting at the beginning of October.
Right.
Which will hopefully allow us to come back to the planning board for the middle of October, meaning the October sixteenth meeting.
Perfect.
So what I would like to request is that we, uh, continue the meeting to the October sixteenth. Where we, we hopefully will have a set of plans for the planning board.
October sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay. We might say a change. I know Dan, you've worked with him on that.
I have, and, uh, just to put it in the record, uh, to make that work, uh, staff needs to receive, the town needs to receive the plans by September twenty-seventh at noon. Which would allow us to then get it onto the October third PRC. And then also have time for staff to review and then get it onto the planning boards. You guys had time to review it before your October sixteenth meeting.
Right. And this is not an attempt to bypass our procedures. It just puts it in there in a very quick way in the procedures so they can get the, um, preliminary site plan to us on the October sixteenth. Okay? Anything else? Chip, appreciate that. Anything else from staff?
No, I, the resolution that we drafted uh, was based on the understanding we got from Lobella's association.
Right.
Um, they've now found that they can do the project as
Right.
discussed here tonight. They have us a complete set of preliminary drawings for the east and the west.
Right, as well as Set for the east, a set for the west.
Lands, uh, swap, uh, map as well.
Okay, since it is a public hearing, staff added nothing else. We'll take public comments on the site plan, but again, we're not really reviewing the site plan. We're just putting it to a continuation. Anybody have any comments on the site plan? Go ahead, sir.
I just wonder when those plans will be available for the public to review.
I agree. It's turned in by September twenty-seventh at noon and then staff will take care of it from there. Thank you. Mm-hmm. Anybody else want to make a comment on, uh, the site plan? Anybody online like to make a comment on the site plan? Okay. I have a motion to adjourn and continue this. Both of the site plan applications, one east, one west. So I have motion to wait, reading and approve that resolution.
I'll make that motion with the change of the date to October sixteenth.
Right, got it. Do I have a second with the change? Second. Second from Adrian. Uh, clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Delucia?
Aye.
Lovebees?
Aye.
Regina Sousa?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
And Hamid.
Aye. Okay, that's the end of the solar stuff for tonight. Appreciate it very much. We'll move into, let me change my pages online. Jenda here. Now we're moving into other board actions. So what we have tonight is a number of actions which require us to determine that the, uh, that the application is complete and classification under sticker, uh, is set and we determine to hold the public hearing and scheduling of that, of that public hearing. So the item A is Maddie's power court. Everything's good and clean on that one. It looks so good from the, um, come on the website or in the documents.
Yeah, uh, you guys a while ago, uh, gave some recommendations to the applicant. Uh, the applicant is online tonight and, uh, he has updated the final site plan amendments.
Right.
And now we have it back in front of you to see if you guys agree to
Right, we're just doing the, um, a complete A completeness of it to get it to um, the next meeting date, so this is going to be the final site plan, so this will be our last.
It's an amendment to the final site plan.
Right. So, do we have any comments uh? The applicant online, you want to make any comments about this, I mean, we're just gonna say yes or no, whether we think it's complete or not.
Okay, uh, so, yeah, I, I tried to uh follow. Everything that we could as far as getting uh, the display areas in the appropriate areas. We also are uh, about halfway done installing the additional uh street lamp that was requested. So the electric's been run in the base is uh, set, so we're just trying to get the, the light pole installed. And other than that, uh, trying to make sure that we uh, stay clear of the, the drainage area. That a few people uh had, uh, had concerns over, so just trying to keep the display area up in that uh. Front nor uh, just to say north, be front uh, south corner, but yes.
Yeah, southeast corner.
Yep.
Okay, so um, did anybody have any issues here on the board with this resolution? I have a motion to wait, reading and approve the um, scheduling of the public hearing for this application.
Motion by Tim, second by?
Doug, I'll, I'll, or yeah, let's go to clerk, roll call vote please.
Delucia.
Aye.
Delby.
Aye.
Regina Sousa, aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye, okay, you're good, so you go on the agenda. You can put it in there when? Uh, meeting conducted Wednesday, October second.
October second.
So uh, we'll see you there, we'll talk about the site plan, and we'll be uh, going from there, okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, we have the preliminary two lot subdivision plan application from Allen and Dale Sadler. Uh, this is again, just a, an effort or a resolution uh. Determining completeness and scheduling the public hearing for.
October second.
October second as well, somewhere, oh, there it is. Hidden on October second, anyone have any comments on that, staff have any comments on this one? Have a motion to wait, reading and approve that resolution of scheduling for Saturday. Moved by Adrian, second by?
Gina.
Regina, uh clerk take a roll call vote please.
Delucia.
Aye.
Pete.
Aye.
Regina Sousa, aye. Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
And Henry.
Aye. So that was for the two lot subdivision, and now we have. The. There.
Another two lot subdivision.
Another two lot subdivision, that's what I thought, that's what I had here, but didn't look right. Okay, and any comments on that one? Have a motion to wait, reading and approve the second Sadler one.
First one. This is Blazy, this is Scott Blazy.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
This is a running zero two twenty-fourth.
I thought I had two of something.
There's a Brian Blazy and a Scott Blazy.
I didn't get them all printed out right then. So what's the first one we got there, uh? Brian. Okay. So we got the Brian Blazy application determining our completeness. Everybody good with that? Have a motion to wait, reading and approve the resolution? Moved by Doug, second by? Regina, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote please.
Delucia.
Aye.
Delby.
Aye.
Regina Sousa, aye. Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
And Henry.
Aye. So then we have another one for Blazy.
It's a Scott, it's a.
This is Scott, okay. For some reason I missed printing one of them, this is a Scott Blazy one. Anybody have any issues with this one?
I have to um. I have to say that both of them say Scott.
O two is Brian Blazy, O three is Scott Blazy.
Yeah, and the. Copy that I have, it's Scott Blazy for O two.
That needs to be changed to Brian.
Okay, so O two was the one we just did.
Right, and that should be Brian.
That should be Brian. And this one here, this one here is what, O three?
Yep.
And this should be Scott.
Yeah. Yeah, October second.
We can get those applications, are there the application forms that are wrong, or is it, sorry, this is Brennan Marks.
Yeah, I think it's the resolution.
I think it's just the resolution.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, Brian Blazy is the father, Scott is the son that's looking to buy and build.
Okay.
Yep.
So we just approved the Brian Blazy. Right?
Yep.
Now we're doing the, now we're doing the Scott Blazy.
Which is.
Site. Which is a site plan, it's, okay, um, now we're gonna do the site one.
We can't do that until October subway, correct?
That's correct. Alright.
Right.
So that's.
So why is it that one the second?
Well, that's. He was submitted together, so.
I understand, I'm just asking a question now.
Yep. So. Excellent question, because your rules of procedures normally say that you guys do subdivision first.
Right.
And until you do subdivision, you won't allow site plan to move forward.
So site plan would have to come in and.
Oh, then we change this from October second to the next one, which would be the sixteenth, right?
Well, well, or whatever date. It's nothing different than what we just did earlier tonight for Matty's power sports. That came before you back in July, you said it wasn't complete. They came back in with a complete application.
Right.
This, this application, both of them were submitted together. Staff can't make this determination.
Right.
Planning board's determination.
Right.
Okay? You can't. Accept something as complete. For a lot that doesn't exist at this point in time.
So that would have to be tabled, or just not approved until?
That's what the resolution says.
It says it cannot be accepted as being complete. Yes, yeah, that's in the resolution.
So it comes with, so it basically says we're not accepting it as complete.
Yes.
The actual site one.
We have to wait until the.
We have to wait till the lot picks up, till it's all submitted. Brennan, did you understand all that?
Yeah, Dan explained it to me beforehand, um, so. I, as long as the subdivision's moving, that's fine with me.
Yeah, subdivision's the first piece, get that done, get that approved, then we can get the other.
I know the board and the Pats is allowed when final sub comes in, preliminary site to come in. Or behind them.
Right.
Uh.
That same night.
That same night, but. Not normally preliminary and preliminary.
We don't, I'll break that, turn over them, so we can put the data on it.
Staff hasn't reviewed the preliminary subdivision.
So, the, the application or the resolution that we have, which I didn't print that one out. For.
Lasted.
Scott. It just says that we can't, we're not approving it tonight, so.
Yeah, except tonight, sir.
Can't accept it.
Permanent.
This is O nine, O three dash twenty-four, it says the application cannot be accepted as being complete. So do I have a motion to wait, reading and approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Doug, second by?
Adrian.
Adrian, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote please.
Delucia.
Aye.
Delby.
Aye.
Regina Sousa, aye. Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. You don't know how hard I try and print out all the right applications, there's just too many of them. Um, okay, next item up should be. PB zero nine zero four. Which is the. Deputy Kate Potter subdivision. Okay? This is the one that says move to accept this application for final site plan approval. And scheduling a public meeting thereon. For October second. Not complex as one. Have a motion to wait, reading and approve that resolution.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by, and second by.
Adrian.
Adrian, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote please.
Delucia.
Aye.
Delby.
Aye.
Adrian. Regina Sousa, aye. Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye. You're gonna have trouble with that one for a while there. Go ahead.
Okay, so you've got the final, the final site plan has been um.
Scheduled.
Scheduled. Alright, so the next meeting is October second for the approval of that final.
The review and. Posed approval, yes.
Right. Alright, and not if it gets approved, then it's a done deal.
Well, then you have to go work with staff and get the building permitted on it.
Well, they have to submit, I mean.
Well, you're right, you have to submit the updated plan with any conditions of approval.
And then.
It might be.
Staff signs it, and then you can submit for building them.
Correct.
Almost.
Done deal.
Almost.
Never a done deal. Still the very end.
My subdivision's probably done, so.
There you go, that's right. Okay, the last item uh, under other board actions is PB zero nine zero five dash twenty-four. To how under design preliminary site plan and approval application for lot one. Um. Not in the determination of completeness, so.
Is this why I thought on County Road?
It's a exempt action because it's a single family house.
But because it's on County Road? No, I, I didn't understand the.
Single family.
I said they had to go to County Plan Board. It's not a county.
Okay, yes.
The subdivision did, right?
Yeah, the subdivision already went.
Right, now this one doesn't have to, right?
I'm wondering what qualified, I just. That's why I thought I wanted to.
Okay, it's a determination of completeness, but I have a motion to wait, reading and approve the resolution. Moved by Adrian, second by?
Regina.
Regina, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote please.
Delucia.
Aye.
Delby.
Aye.
Regina Sousa, aye. Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's take care of that. Now, we're into. Reports. From staff, Ron.
Okay, uh. Dan and I have been working with Sean C. Malone, I'm Malloy, excuse me. On the Whitestone scheduling uh, for the overall preliminary subdivision and overall preliminary site plan. For the Whitestone incentive zoning project.
Correct.
And uh, we have given them. Um, our input, they've made the changes, they're going to be submitting. To the town. For the October third.
PRC.
PRC. And following the October third PRC comments. Make back to you on the sixteenth. Once again, just to refresh everybody. We have a new member of the planning board that wasn't here during the uh, process.
Mm-hmm.
There was some changes that were made to the uh, concept plan. By the town board and, and those, they just want to review them again with you. And then it will be submitted to you for formal. Processing uh, coordinated review and everything. Right now their timeline looks as though it's going to be May of twenty twenty-five. When they get final uh, site plan approval. So as you can uh. Imagine there's a number of steps involved here with. Getting the preliminary overall, getting it filed with the town clerk, and then getting the. Lots subdivided, and then getting the site plans approved. Uh, in final form for. First phase of that project.
And it's an incentive zone.
They have power?
Yes.
We don't know that yet. We don't.
Hey Pete.
Alan.
So, anything else, Ron, you got Whitestone?
Yep, next minor matter, you, they. We had originally been informed that uh, Paul Baker wanted to discuss. A proposal that. Um, is being considered by A and D Development. One of the partners of A and D Development. Wants out. And so, the other partner is trying to figure out how to. Deal with the balance of the development of that site. What was originally intended was to. Combine all three portions of that project that remained. There were a total of five. Uh, section one was completed and exposed though. Section two is under construction now. And the current contractor. Uh, had indicated that. He was not willing to. You know, do everything all at once. Others have stepped up and said they are interested and. Mr. Ant, uh, the department needs time to. Consider those pauses. So uh, we will not be hearing from. Mr. Baker tonight.
Okay.
Finally, the TAP project. Um. The project is. Uh, being. Closed out on certain aspects. The boring of the sidewalk, all that remains is the driveway crossing. For Henry Hansen. That's been postponed because that's where they've been stockpiling. Materials for the project. But that will be completed before the end of October. The uh, area west of the creek. Beaver Creek. Uh, to the trail is going through re. Purposing now, Black, uh, Blacktop has been installed. Sidewalks have been installed, the Grant curb being's been installed. Now they're getting into bringing in the topsoil and recreating and clearing that. Um. As difficult as this next statement might be to leave. Um, the contractors working on the. The subcontractors working on the bridge abutments. For the crossing of Beaver Creek. Have been trying now for, since May. To get lug bolts. So that they can put them in the abutments.
Right.
So they can bring the bridge in and put them on. They bought, that, the, guess what, there's a delay in delivery.
Yeah, make yourself up.
Everybody uses that excuse. So anyways. Soon as they get that, they're ready to complete that abutment. They will put in the bridge, or the uh. Approaches to the bridge.
Right.
They will put the concrete in if they can get the bolts. And we can make before the end of October, which is. You know, after that point in time, it's very expensive to put concrete in.
Right.
And the other, only other remaining element is that we are working on the redesign of the trail. Removing it, shifting it. A little bit to make it fit on, on the town property. Other than that, we're ready to say that this project. Is almost ready for. Substantial completion.
Nice.
We come back hopefully next year to. Do some work around Elizabeth Way and over there on Matensia. After the water line gets installed and has time to settle. And uh. We will be uh, moving. The GTC for an application. For phase two of the sidewalk project to complete. In twenty twenty-six probably. The uh.[1689.14] in twenty twenty six probably, the uh sidewalk, uh, master plan.
Cool.
So, that, that's it.
That's enough, Ron. Must keep you busy, for sure.
Dan? Um, the department is still very busy with all the hail damage, uh, working with contractors, uh, insurance companies, I'm sure you've heard of the different insurance companies that's been on the news uh with issues with that, so we've been trying to help our residents uh navigate the waters on those problems. Um, so, things have been very busy, um, and we still are receiving multiple applications as you can see, so we're going to try to keep you guys busy, and again, we're going to stay digital for a while. Um, as always, if you need something hard to copy, let us know.
Hey, hey, Tim?
Um, just working on trying to get some things buttoned up before winter, um, still have shoulders to put on. Still helping some other towns pave roads, they're still out there paving. Um got a few drainage issues we have to take care of. Hopefully, get those all done before winter.
There you go.
Don't want that to happen anytime soon.
Lance?
Um, MRB group is working on the site design criteria updates. As I referenced before, we met with each of the departments. We're going through this, so the first wave of improvements and updates, I'm hoping to deliver to the town by Friday. So now that it's in the minutes, you can hold me to it right there. So, we have the first wave hopefully by Friday, and then we'll continue to progress through the other appendancy sections. I've been working with Ron on the zoning map update to show the strategic farmland overland protection area, I don't think I said that right, but um, nonetheless, that map is under draft and under review by Ron. MS four, New York State DC, as I referenced before, had an updated permit, MS four permit that went into effect this year. So all the communities didn't have to do the annual permit uh process as typical in April, but they did have to do these interim certifications. So we did one early January, February timeframe, the other ones do in October. So I'm meeting with Dan tomorrow uh to kind of go over that next step and that submission, so hopefully department thing can be wrapped up for this year, and then we'll we'll continue progressing to, to April next year. And then MRB's still working on the, the parking mast, uh, parking rec, master plan update with the town.
Cool.
Sure by you. Uh, thank you. Uh, last onboard meeting, uh, the town board got my tentative twenty twenty five budget uh last night, tonight, and tomorrow night, we're meeting with all department heads, the outside agencies, fire departments, uh, library, those things, and hopefully have a preliminary budget in October that we can vote on by the second meeting in October for twenty twenty five.
Cool.
Taxes, town tax, highway tax, hopefully not going up any. Our department tax will take a jump.
Mm-hmm.
And um water tax up a little bit. And some, some sidewalks up, mostly most flat. And lighting districts mostly up a little bit, and others flat. Budget, legally divided has to be approved by November twentieth, so we
Right.
we try to do it by our second meeting in October.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Public, any additional comments? In the back there, ma'am, you have any comments? Sure, okay.
And I, I just want to point out two things. The zoning board of appeals Monday night will be considering action on the Fowler.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Uh, and if that gets approved, then it comes back to you, so you can move forward with your preliminary uh re-subdivision
Right.
of three lots. Um, the other two things are temporary use permits. One is Peretta up there on State Street. Has completed an application, it's gone to the county, they've sent it back as a type one with um, it's just relating to stormwater. Um, and the other one is a bridges for brain injury project here on County Road eight. Um, the horse farm down there that was owned by what, the Sessi. Um, they want to acquire that and over time develop it. Um, they're proposing to develop um a twelve thousand square foot public building for programs and demonstrations. Some of the other existing buildings, all of this will be coming to you for site plan approval.
Right.
As you know, with any temporary use permit. So, uh, those, those are on the agenda. Uh.
We need more things to discuss.
Well, yeah, I, I, it goes without saying, we still haven't heard from someone who promised us things a month ago.
No.
No, we haven't, so.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, for me, I did, I was going to say I wasn't going to be here on the sixteenth, but it looks like I am, I'm not leaving Florida until the next morning, so I'll be here on the sixteenth.
That'll be a short meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure. Anybody have anything?
When the maps come out for solar there for the preliminary site plan, will we get those early or just let it?
So normally, you would get them at your normal timeframe, and you would like them early, just let me know, and I can get them to you early, you just won't, you won't have staff comments.
That's, yeah, it is, it would be nice to have a printing on that one, it would be a little closer.
Yeah. Would anybody else like a printing copy on that one, or you would like?
I'm doing online.
Alright, so two on the end, alright.
So, I mean, I could take it like the night at the second meeting, if they have it in the next week or something, you can print one for the next, the second, October second, that's fine, but it'd just be nice to have it ahead of time for.
Yeah, so if I get both of you on October second's meeting, that would work?
Yeah, I can grab it here that night or something.
Okay, I will make sure that, because they're supposed to have them to me the Friday before, so that should not be an issue.
You're right. If they don't though, we can get back.
Right, it's going to the sixteenth anyway, but.
Right, but if they don't have it by then, it has to be kicked back to the first part of November.
Yeah.
For the medium of November, yes. They still go to the PRC meeting if they get it closer to that, but they can't get to that.
And then for application on that road, they're de- they're dedicating the road to the town, for the land to be developed as another county, that's.
Which road are you talking?
Solar, that's what you're talking about, really.
Yeah, which one of them? There, there's two.
Yeah, two roads.
Or the one that gentleman said, the east west one.
That's the east west one, coming off the road, you know, and out.
Is it, they're dedicating land for further down the road?
Right.
Is it? We're just making sure.
Yep. Anybody else have anything?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Dan sent along the information about the local government workshop on October twenty fifth.
Yep.
I hope that the registration process, I could have it invoiced, I need to know what approvals I need to be able to register for this.
Uh, just reach out to Marcy, and she could, yep, she can actually register you for that.
Okay.
So that you don't have to worry about that, but.
Right.
It is a good conference over in North, uh, I will be one of the speakers, so.
Yeah.
I will be presenting about stormwater with the stormwater collection.
Don't be so scared.
Well, I promise you I will not come back to Florida for that.
Well, there you go.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
Motion adjourned by Doug, second by Tim, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.